I call to order and welcome you to the Middletown, Ohio City Council Meeting for Tuesday, August nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Please join me for a moment of meditation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the American Flag. You will hear three taps of the gavel when it is time to stand. Please join me in a moment of meditation now. Clerk of Counsel, Mrs. Amy Skank, please call the attendance roll.
Mr. Lally.
President.
Mrs. Carter. Mr. West.
Here.
Mr. Horn.
Here.
Mayor Slanka.
Here. First on the agenda this evening is a presentation. I welcome Janet- Janet Cummings and her students to the podium. Is she here this evening?
I have not seen her.
Okay, yes, I don't see her either.
We could come back if she-
Yeah, if she arrives.
She may be running a few minutes late.
Okey dokey. All right, in that case, next on the agenda are two public hearings. The first public hearing is regarding a map amendment or zone change on Van Ness Avenue. We wanted to talk about this before we continued.
Yes, so counsel, my understanding is that there's a technical difficulty that we can't have slides for this public hearing. And in the interest of ensuring that a full and fair public hearings had, there's a question of whether we should postpone this particular public hearing.
So is there a motion to postpone this first public hearing regarding Van Ness Avenue until our next council meeting, which would be September second?
Motion.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. Mrs. Skank, please call the roll.
Mrs. Carter.
Yes.
Mr. West.
Yes.
Mr. Horn.
Yes.
Mayor Slanka.
Yes.
Mr. Lally.
Yes.
Yeses have it, and the motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Ewing. Next is the second public hearing. Are we prepared to move forward with that one? Yes. Okay, so the next public hearing is regarding the consideration of a text amendment to the Middletown Development Code and Historic Commission. Law Director, Mr. Alex Ewing, you have the floor for the swearing in. Thank you. At this point, I would like to welcome Claire Fetter's Vinegar to the podium for our staff report.
All right, so this should be a pretty brief staff presentation on the text amendment. So this was initiated by City Council, I believe, in the early summer by you all. And this is the consideration of a text amendment of the Middletown Development Code, specifically Chapter twelve, twenty-six oh one, Review and Decision-Making Authorities, specifically Part C, to consider adding a City Council liaison as a non-voting additional member of the Historic Commission, similar to what you see with our Planning Commission membership. So the current text, I believe, is screenshotted in your staff packet. And the additional proposed text amendment is going to change the following items in twelve, twenty-six oh one, Part C, Part Two. So the addition will add seven voting members to that first part of Part A in twelve, twenty-six, Part C, Part Two, Part A, and one non-voting member who shall be a member of City Council. And then if you go through the numbered list, numbers one through eight, there will be an additional item, Part Nine. There shall be one non-voting member of the Historic Commission who shall be a member of City Council as designated by a majority vote of City Council. And you will see your review criteria in your staff packet, and that will really conclude my staff report. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. Any questions at this point? No, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so at this point, is there anyone who would like to speak in support of this amendment? Seeing none, we will continue. Is there anyone who would speak in- who is opposed? Seeing none, we will continue. And anyone who would like to speak in a general nature? Seeing none, we will continue. At this point, the city can speak one last time, but I think we're good there, correct? Okay, wonderful. And this concludes the public comment portion of the public hearing. At this point, we have council deliberations. We encourage you to stay through it, though there will be no further public comment and no interruptions. Would council members like to say anything?
Yes.
Mr. Horn.
So what this is, is I brought this forward because one of the folks on the Historical Council wanted a City Council member. Asked me blatantly why they didn't have one, because all the other boards have them. And then another member, want to make sure that they are a non-voting member, which that's always the case. So all this does is this just makes it where we have a City Council member, just like we have them at the airport, we have them at Planning Commission, we have them at parks, as a liaison to report back to City Council. One thing I'd like to add, which is not part of this, but I just want to put it out there, next year, when you do appoint folks to the different positions, I would have this, the person on Planning Commission also be the person that goes to Historical, because they're kind of tied together. And it makes sense, instead of having two separate people giving two separate reports to back to City Council, because that is the purpose of the liaison, and also to participate in the meetings. But all this is, is just adding a City Council member, non-voting. What that means is, is when they sit here and they have, they hear what a case that the City Council member can participate verbally, but when it comes down to the vote of the yeses or nos, they are a non-voting member.
Thank you, Mr. Horn. Would anyone else like to speak from counsel? Nope. All right. Hearing none, we will continue then. Mr. Ewing, would you please go ahead and take the council straw vote?
Yeah, so the straw vote is, the question is the approval of the text amendment. Council Member Horn?
Yes.
Council Member West?
Yes.
Mayor Slanka?
Yes.
Council Member Carter?
Yes.
Council Member Lally?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Ewing. And this concludes the public hearing for the evening. The next item on the agenda this evening is citizen comments, and a professional presentation free of foul language is expected. This is not the time for debate, question and answer, or any back and forth conversation. This is a time for you, our residents, to be able to present in front of council on record, uninterrupted, and have the floor. We have eleven public comments this evening, and I will prompt each speaker for their next steps when they reach the podium. I would like, we will have an hour for public comment. And I would like to call Jeffrey May to the podium first, please. And you may stand or sit according to your preference. Please adjust the microphone and speak directly into the microphone at all times. And before we begin, please state your full name and Middletown residence or work address for the record. You will then have four minutes of uninterrupted speech. Please commence.
Hi, I am Jeffrey May. I live at twenty-seven forty-seven Town Boulevard, apartment number three, Middletown four five zero four four. I am here to deliver prepared comments from Dan Laurel. Greetings. My name is Dan Laurel, and I am the proud owner of Gravel Road Brewing Company in historic downtown Middletown. Like many small business owners, my work keeps me busy. So as such, prior business commitments prevent me from being present in person this evening. Thus, a dedicated patron has agreed to share this prepared statement on my behalf. Two weeks ago, I received a citation for multiple, for multiple building code violations. Some of these were minor, others carried more serious implications. Two in particular require between eight thousand and ten thousand dollars to correct, a cost that would place my young business in serious financial jeopardy. I want to be clear, I believe in the importance of codes and safety standards. They exist to protect both businesses and the community. But in practice, enforcement is rarely black and white. Small businesses that are investing heavily in downtown revitalization need pathways to compliance that are reasonable, collaborative, and supportive. When I reached out to the city and copied this council to express my concerns, I had hoped for dialogue and problem solving. Instead, I received little engagement. What I hoped to see was a willingness to meet, to brainstorm creative solutions, and to demonstrate a shared commitment to both downtown development and small business survival. That kind of engagement would send a powerful message that Middletown not only values investment, but also the people making it possible. I did receive a reply, but it was phrased in a way that felt dismissive and condescending, implying that the rules are simply the rules and that perhaps I needed the codes explained to me. I raised this not to assign blame, but to highlight how communication matters. When business owners feel brushed aside, it discourages future investment and damages trust. I must also mention a comment from the former director of Community and Economic Development, who suggested my business, quote, "doesn't matter," end quote, because I am not yet generating W-two revenue. I believe strongly that this perspective is incomplete. While payroll growth is important, small businesses like mine contribute in many other ways, by attracting visitors, generating excitement, strengthening community identity, and laying the groundwork for larger investments. The value of these contributions cannot be overlooked if Middletown is to grow. I do not bring this to you as criticism alone, but as a call for partnership. Council's role is critical to ensure fairness and enforcement to all property owners equally, to hold all property owners equally accountable, and to ensure that small business, that small businesses working in good faith are supported rather than discouraged. I believe the city has an opportunity to set a strong example by applying the same standards to neglectful landlords as to active businesses, and by offering constructive pathways to compliance rather than barriers. My hope is that the new leadership in Community and Economic Development, along with this council, will reaffirm a commitment to small business and to downtown's long-term success. Middletown's future depends on collaboration, fairness, and vision. I stand ready to do my part, and I hope the city will stand with me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, I would like to call Mary Johnson to the podium. And you may stand or sit according to your preference before we begin, but also to please adjust the microphone and speak directly into the microphone at all times. Please state your full name and Middletown residence for the record, and then you will then have four minutes of uninterrupted speech. Please commence.
Mary Johnson, sixty-seven hundred Locust Lane, Downtown Middletown, Inc., Board Chair. I'm providing further perspective on the letter from Dan Laurel, the owner of the Gravel Road Brewing Company. As you know, DMI's mission is downtown revitalization. I've been heartened to hear from City Council on several occasions that they agree with DMI, that our downtown is the heart of Middletown. As we know, people flock to downtowns that are vibrant and offer one-of-a-kind businesses. Small businesses that are owned or operated are the backbone of our downtown, and successful small businesses eventually grow to become larger businesses, employees that generate W-two revenue. Gravel Road is an integral part of the downtown community experience, and Dan Laurel is an outstanding member of our community. He's passionate about his craft, his business, and the downtown's overall success. Dan always signs up to participate in downtown events, and when the Middletown Farmers Markets were canceled, he stepped up and worked with the organizers to relocate to property leased by Gravel Road. And when Larry Cantor, a local food truck owner, was in a serious accident that ruined his food truck and livelihood, Dan hosted a fundraiser at Gravel Road that raised several thousand dollars to support Larry. That's the kind of person Dan is. We all agree that building code enforcement is crucial to the health and safety of downtown. We are also in agreement with Dan that small businesses that are investing heavily in downtown revitalization need pathways to compliance that are reasonable, collaborative, and supportive. Most do not have the resources to comply with major structural changes within a thirty-day period. Therefore, we urge the city to work with our small businesses to make their building, buildings co-compliant in ways that allow them to continue to operate. One suggestion is for the city to develop a program to assist downtown building owners to make repairs. That is, a small business version of the residential repair program. Even if we didn't have a business vacancy rate over fifty percent, we cannot afford to lose a vibrant small business like Gravel Road. No discussion of building code enforcement can ignore what could be the largest single factor preventing us from having the kind of vibrant downtown that Middletown wants and deserves, absentee landlords with several vacant properties. And most of these properties have serious building code violations. They are a drag in our downtown and in our city. I urge City Council to work with the city staff to make vacant property legislation and enforcement a top priority. I know you have been working on it, but it's been taking quite a while. Please provide the people and resources to finalize the legislation within the next few months. We need a solution now, and I'm very afraid there may not be much of a downtown to save. As always, thank you for your service.
Thank you. Next, I would like to call Ms. Kristi Durich to the podium. You may stand or sit according to your preference. Please adjust the microphone and speak directly into it at all times. And before we begin, please state your full name and work address, and then we'll have four minutes of uninterrupted speech. Please commence.
Kristi Durich, at ten-fifty Central Avenue, the Safety Council of Southwestern Ohio. And I come today to, to share just some happy news and the excitement of a wonderful summer with Safety Town that we had this year. Middletown Police Officers Chris Fugit, Max Keith Maxwell, he took it to a whole nother level this summer. And we're just so excited and proud to be part of the program. There were two hundred and four kids going into kindergarten that graduated. And I know the mayor and the city manager attended the reception we had. So thanks for coming on that. You got to see firsthand the excitement, right, and the parents and the kids and the second. And I think we might even be on our third generation of people going through Safety Town. But we do a survey, and I just wanted to share some of the highlights of that. So to the question, do you feel that the information your child learned at Safety Town will have a positive impact on keeping them safe? One hundred percent of the survey respondents said yes. And then these are just, what is your favorite? What did you like best about it? I just wanted to share, if I can read small print, learning real-world issues in a kid-friendly way, getting to learn about police fire and school safety procedures. I think it helps create a positive environment between kids and community servants. I really like how they were driving small cars at the end to showcase how it is on the real road, because those kids are going to be driving in ten more years. So got to start teaching the rules of the road early. Very well organized, and they made it very engaging for the kids. I liked how my child learned that she, if she ever needs help, never be afraid to ask the cops. They are there to help and make them safe. And that's part of, part of it. It started in nineteen seventy-eight, just to help kids learn how to get to school safe, whether they walked, rode the bus, or rode with their parents. So lots of good things. Everything I appreciate. They heard and practiced the rules from official folks, reinforcing what we've been teaching them as parents. I like asking them to be aware of those around them, not just themselves. She was excited to go and learned all the safety songs I learned when I was in Safety Town. So fun. And then the last one, I love how interact, interactive the entire program is. The staff and SROs were amazing, and my daughter had so much fun. She's been done with Safety Town for a month now and still talks about the program. I appreciate all the hard work that goes into the program and how you all do so much to ensure the program continues, improves, and stays free for our communities. Thank you. So it is a free program. We're just excited, you know, we're patting ourselves on the back. We also wanted, I don't see any officers here, but they did such a great job. And we hope we'll see them next year. So, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Durich. Next, I would like to call Ms. Courtney Whitlock to the podium. You may stand or sit according to your preference. Please adjust the microphone and speak directly into the microphone at all times. And before we begin, please state your full name and Middletown residence or work address for the record. You will then have four minutes of uninterrupted speech. Please commence.
My name is Courtney Whitlock. I live at five-twenty Anderson Street, Franklin, Ohio. Good afternoon. Before I begin to tell you about Abilities First and how it has been such an important part of my family's life, I try not to cry, I would like to tell you about my son. My son Andrew was diagnosed with autism at two and a half. We did everything they told us we were supposed to do. We got him into OT therapy, speech therapy, and connected him with Help Me Grow. Eventually, we had him connected with the school district. Before I knew it, he was five and off to kindergarten. My husband and I contemplated for a long time on whether or not to send Andrew to public school. I knew about Abilities. I had worked for Abilities a long time ago, but was hesitant to send him there. I wanted him to be in a setting with typical kids also. But this led to the beginning of the worst year of our lives. My happy-spirited, energetic, and vocal son suddenly stopped talking. I was told by his teachers that he would hide all day until it was time for therapy or recess. My son loves to sing, and he stopped singing, and then he started having seizures. I would get phone calls from his teachers every day saying that he was having another seizure. We took him for constant tests, went through multiple hospital stays, but the doctors could only come to one conclusion. The seizures were brought on by stress. I don't know what type of stress my son was going through. I stopped trusting his teachers and wanted to get him out of the public school system immediately. I reached out to Abilities First, and they helped me get him transferred so quickly. But in the first few months, I saw a spark in my son come back. My son has now been at Abilities First for a year. He finished kindergarten there, went through their summer program, and has now started first grade. He's smiling again, singing again, and most importantly, we have gone one full year seizure-free. Abilities First gave me my son back. There is nothing more important to a special needs parent than having peace of mind that their child is being cared for and educated appropriately. And Abilities First gives you that peace of mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Whitlock. Next, I would like to call Ms. Marva Gaston to the podium. You may stand or sit according to your preference, and please adjust the microphone and speak directly into the microphone at all times. Please state your full name and Middletown residence for the record. You will then have four minutes of uninterrupted speech. Please commence.
Yes, my name is Marva Gaston. I reside at nine thirteen Sixth Avenue here in Middletown. And I am addressing council once again in reference to the debris left over from the Middletown Paperboard demolition. Once again, I come to express my deep concern about the debris left behind from the demolition of the Middletown Paperboard Company, previously located along Verity Parkway. I began voicing my concern with this matter at the beginning of May of this year, with very little results from council or the city manager towards making decisions that will protect the community. With that being said, I have asked straightforward, I asked straightforward, does this council care about the health concerns of this community and the residents of this city? What has to happen for anyone to take proper action towards protecting the health of this community? At no point has anyone voiced anything towards the protection of the people. You have only voiced how you can make money with the material that is currently on the site and how you can use it. I'm all for the city making and/or saving money, but not at the risk of the health of the community. I requested copies of the contract bids submitted and accepted throughout, through your website. I have received absolutely no response, so I still do not have copies of that material, that paperwork. Having been born and raised here in Middletown, it is commonplace for council to ignore production advancement and improvement of way of life on the south end of town. But I never thought I would see the day that it would be so blatant that you would risk the lives of the residents. Your lack of movement screams, "We do not care about the residents that live in the south end of town." If you are struck, if, if one of us are struck with lung disease, asthma, or any other disease from the effects of breathing contaminated dust in this area, it rings, "Deal with it." How do you expect the people of this town to trust a system that does not answer our concerns, let alone do anything about it? I have watched many residents, even today, stand at this podium, voicing concerns within the community, and receive nothing but blank stares, minimal acknowledgement, and zero answers, let alone productive results. I think I can say with great certainty that this is not the type of leadership we expect out of you. What are you going to do to show this city that that is not what you stand for? As I go through the community, many are not pleased with how concerns are addressed with this administration. Show the people of the south end and this city as a whole that you do care about our health, that you do care about this city. Show the people that you care. Again, I ask that you do this, do the right thing by moving this debris from our neighborhood and prevent potential health issues within this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gaston. Next, I would like to call Larry Silas to the podium. And you may stand or sit according to your preference. Please adjust the microphone and speak directly into the microphone at all times. Before we begin, please state your full name and Middletown residence for the city record. You will then have four minutes of uninterrupted speech. Please commence.
Hello, my name is Larry Silas. I live at twelve-eleven Elm Street, and I am here today to talk about the rubble pile left after the demolition of the paper mill. I live on the other side of Verity, near Rosa Parks, and in the morning when I go to work, the cars on my block are covered in dust. And I'm pretty sure I have an idea of where it's coming from. And I also enjoy exercising outside, running, and walking around my neighborhood. And there are days where I have to avoid the streets near the rubble pile because it's windy and I don't want to breathe in the things coming from that pile. I also have asthma. And as someone with a pre-existing condition, I don't want to put myself at more risk because of the things that might be in the pile. But people without pre-existing conditions shouldn't have to worry about breathing in what's there. So I just wanted to come here today to ask about if there's a timeline on removal, and to let you know that there are many concerned citizens when it comes to our city and something like that, and its continued presence. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Silas. Next, I'd like to invite Lauren McLemore to the podium. You may stand or sit according to your preference. Please do adjust the microphone and speak directly into the microphone at all times. And before we begin, please state your full name and Middletown residence or work address for the record. You will then have four minutes of uninterrupted speech. Please commence.
My name is Lauren McLemore. I'm at forty-eight twenty-one Trenton Franklin Road, Middletown, Ohio, four five zero four two. Good evening, Mayor, council members, and community members. My name is Lauren McLemore, and I am grateful for the opportunity to speak with you about my family's positive experience with Abilities First Early Learning Center. My daughter Daisy, who is now seven years old, and my son Jimmy, who is three, have both attended Abilities First since they were babies. From the very start, this center has been so much more than us, than a place for childcare. It has truly felt like a second family to us. As a parent navigating the complexities, complexities of meeting my child's developmental need, I found incredible support through Abilities First. The staff not only provided a warm, family-like atmosphere, but also offered invaluable resources that helped guide me every step of the way. One of the things I appreciate the most is how well they communicated with me as a parent. They made sure that a personalized care plan was put in place uniquely tailored to cover my children's individual needs. This thoughtful approach has been key to their progress. Knowing that while I was at work, my children were receiving the best possible care and therapies gave me a peace of mind that is hard to put into work. The range of therapies available right now on site would be occupational therapy, speech therapy, and physical therapy. This allowed Daisy and Jimmy to receive the specialized support they need without missing a moment of learning or playing. I genuinely believe that because of this approach, my children are both progressing well. In the times that developmental concerns arose, Abilities First was incredibly helpful in referring us to additional resources and programs they collaborate with. Their commitment to work together towards a common goal for each child's success has made all the difference. I also would like to highlight the Autism Learning Center within Abilities First, which provides specialized support tailored to children on the autism spectrum. The staff's training and dedication to working with children with autism and other disabilities are evident in everything they do. It's reassuring to know that children with diverse needs are not only welcome, but truly understood and nurtured in this environment. Thanks to Abilities First, my children have both thrived socially and developmentally, and my family has felt supported and empowered throughout our journey. I sincerely believe that this center is a vital resource for families in our community. especially those who are seeking inclusive, expert care for children with a range of abilities. Thank you for allowing me to share my story. I hope that you would continue to support and recognize the important work that Abilities First does for our children and families. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McLemore. Next, I would like to call Kelly Busenjer to the podium. You may stand or sit according to your preference. Please adjust the microphone and speak directly into the microphone at all times. And before we begin, please state your full name and Middletown residence or work address for the record. You will then have four minutes of uninterrupted speech. Please commence.
My name is Kelly Busenjer. I'm at 6895 Netherland Drive, Liberty Township 45044. My son Eli was diagnosed with Autism Spectrum Disorder and Global Developmental Delay at the age of two. Our beautiful boy had not yet met some of his milestones, most notably speech. We longed for him to give us even one word, and these diagnoses left us feeling anxious, uncertain, and helpless. The thoughts can be pretty intrusive. Will he ever speak? Will he ever tie his shoes, play baseball? Will he make a friend? Will he sit alone in the cafeteria at school? These questions flood in and multiply, each heavier than the one before. Soon, we found that even everyday things like a haircut or a trip to the grocery store were mountains to climb. We began our interventions at Children's. Each week, we had two to three appointments scheduled between speech and occupational therapy. We were blessed with an amazing team of individuals that eased our worries and modeled strategies for us to implement at home. My husband and I cried when Eli said the letter "A." It was very clear, though, that our son needed more intervention. He was so curious and full of energy and so, so smart, still is. He just needed the right environment. After researching our options, we decided to give Abilities First a try. We had no clue what to expect. Eli hadn't had much experience with other children or caregivers. Abilities First has become a key component to our family's life. The staff has loved, encouraged, and worked diligently for Eli. He has been hyped and celebrated on his very best days, and comforted and met with patience and kindness on his worst. They have pivoted, they have pivoted again, and again, and again for his ever-changing needs. Our son has learned coping skills and strategies to regulate his emotions, how to play cooperatively with other children, and not just next to them, communicate his needs clearly, and show empathy and care and kindness for others. It has been nothing short of incredible. In a short two-and-a-half years of programs with our extended Abilities family, our Eli can tell us when his tummy hurts, his favorite colors, how his day was, and the name of every single dinosaur that has ever existed. With a hint of arrogance paired with his dimple grin, he can also, he will also correct us every single chance he gets. That's not a screwdriver. That's a drill. So silly, mommy. He enjoys pranking his father and I by leaving toy lizards in unexpected places. We also finally heard something we prayed so hard for: Those sweet, beautiful words, "I love you." Abilities is a gem in our town. So many unique, incredible children in our community need this special place. So many of us have experienced cruel words, dirty looks, and mistreatment from others that are hateful or simply do not understand. But here, families are met with understanding and provided support, strategies, therapies, and additional resources to help meet our baby's needs. If families need help with finding AAC devices, equipment, wheelchairs, anything at all, Abilities is there. They will sit and help you write appeals when your insurance turns you away for the hundredth time. They are our allies, our advocates, our safe place, and our village builders. Not only has my son made close friends, but I've also found fellow mama bears that I communicate with every single day, and I have to say, not feeling alone is a pretty empowering thing. Our journey is far from over. There is much more adversity to tackle. But I can truly say that our Abilities First family is an invaluable driver in the simple fact that our incredible boy is thriving. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Busenjer. Next, I would like to call Mr. Jim Kleinger to the podium. You may stand or sit according to your preference. Please adjust the microphone and speak into it directly the entire time. But before we begin, please state your full name and Middletown address, and then you'll have four minutes of uninterrupted speech. Please commence.
All right. My name is Jim Kleinger, and I live at 4812 Scarborough Court here in Middletown, 45042. Good evening, and thank you for giving me a few moments here. I don't know what I can add to the, to the, to the young ladies that have gotten up here to tell you a little bit about what we do at Abilities First. I'm a Middletown native, longtime resident, and have been on the Board of Trustees at Abilities First for the last eleven years. I'm currently the Vice President of that Board of Trustees. We've been serving differently-abled children for sixty-seven years. Here in Middletown, it's a local treasure, Abilities First. Long history here, was originally known as the Doty House when we were founded in 1958. Recently, actually, in the last two or three months, we became aware of a financial situation that was unexpected, I guess, in that way, and have embarked on a campaign to raise a considerable amount of money here in, in, over the summer in order to allow Abilities First to continue doing what we do best, which is, which is helping kids with educational services and therapies. My wife, Mary Jean, and I have joined with many supporters of Abilities First to raise a considerable amount of money so far, but we're still a little ways from our goal. And I would like to invite council in the city of Middletown to, to help us get to that goal here this evening. And I understand we're going to have a presentation here in, in just a few moments. So thank you for your time. I do appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Kleinger. Next, I would like to call Ms. Catherine Mueller to the podium. You may stand or sit according to your preference. Please do adjust the microphone and speak into it at all times. Before we begin, please state your full name and Middletown work address or residence for the record. You will then have four minutes of uninterrupted speech. Please commence.
Great. So I am not a resident of Middletown, but I am here under that third bullet, the business interest that I have, and it's here to support the conversations you've heard tonight.
And your full name, please.
About Abilities First. I'm Catherine Mueller, and I'm 4843 Bridge Lane in Mason. So I drive a long ways, and I'm willing to do that, for my son to access services with Abilities First. And really, I found out about them through word of mouth, through parents' groups, because I was looking for a tailored service provider that really understood my child and his needs. My son Polly is twelve. He has autism and significant cognitive disabilities. And so specifically, I started with Abilities First, looking at OT services, found a provider that's within Abilities First that has really met the needs of my son well. But what I'm here to talk about is this camp experience. So something new to Abilities First is, for two years now, they have done Camp Connect, and it has been a game changer for my kiddo. And it's an opportunity that he has yet, before Abilities First, I had not found for Polly. So even though I live in a county that is resource-rich, that has a wonderful Board of Developmental Disabilities, even though there's services in Metro Cincinnati area for camps and things for families that have developmental disabilities, as you've probably heard people say, when you've met one individual with autism, you've met one individual, and you can understand that person's perspective, but everyone is different. So there are camps that I've sifted through, that I heard about, and as I kept reading through pages and pages of camps, he was never able to qualify for other camps. Either he needed a smaller ratio, either camps were overnight provision. They didn't have the safety parameters needed. Suddenly, Abilities First was able to offer camp for the first time last year to Polly to meet his needs. And so they asked the right questions upfront. They asked, "What do you need for camp to be successful for your kiddo?" I'd never been asked that. In fact, I'd been told, "We can't corral your kid." And my child's not an animal and doesn't need to be corralled. So the approach, the respect, the understanding, and the commitment to making camp a success for my son is really what had me really excited to be a part of the Abilities First experience with camp. First, that first camp, he was driven around in a wagon a lot because they understood his needs. He is a sensory-seeking individual. He, on average, has twelve minutes that he can stay focused in a group setting. So it needed to be a tailored program, and Camp Connect was that for him. Fast forward to this year, he had new experiences with this camp. He went canoeing for the first time. He jumped off of a diving board for the first time. And they've been there for the journey and asked those questions upfront. They asked me in preparation this year, "We're going to be offering camp at a different site, one of our partners in the community. How do we best prepare Polly?" And I appreciated that because they understood what it takes for success to happen. And so we started having our therapy sessions at that site before camp even began. And that's the commitment and really the gem of an organization that you have here that is helping families and their children be able to access resources within the community that they deserve. For me, it's about equity. Every child should have access to the same experiences. And whether my child has more complex needs than another child, that doesn't mean they're not deserving of having a camp experience. And so Abilities First has gone the extra mile and been able to do that for Polly. So I wanted to speak to that equity piece. Again, my child doesn't need to be corralled. They need to be understood, similar to other children. They need a staff that understands them, that is equipped to be able to address their needs, which is what the therapeutic team has done with Camp Connect for Polly. And so they've helped build memories, given me hope. Before, I was camped out in the lobby of community centers, doing my work remotely, knowing that at any second I could get a call to go back because my child wasn't able to be successful in that setting. And now the game has changed, and now because of this organization, I'm willing to put in whatever miles it takes to have my son have a great experience. So just advocating for continued support for Abilities First. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mueller. And our final speaker this evening, I'd like to call Ms. Leah Tomlin and Ms. Wendy Sorrell to the podium. And you may stand or sit according to your preference. Please adjust the microphone and speak directly into the microphone at all times. Before we begin, please state your full name and Middletown residence or work address or interest in the city for the record. You will then have four minutes of uninterrupted speech. Please commence.
Hi, my name's Lee Tomlin. I live at 117 Belmont Street here in Middletown.
And I'm Wendy Sorrell. I live at 3604 Sherman Avenue here in Middletown.
So we're here on behalf of our high school class reunion. We are celebrating our fiftieth year. And on our yearbooks, I don't know if you got the email? Nope. So I sent y'all an email, and on our yearbook in 1975, it said 100th graduating class. So that makes this year our 150th reunion at, um...
The city schools.
Thank you, for the Middletown City Schools. We were wondering if, with you all, you were willing to facilitate any kind of celebration for our city schools being 150 years old? Thought it would be kind of fun and a good way to bring our community together. What do y'all think?
This is not the time for back and forth right now, but you can present what you'd like to say, and then later, we can be in touch with you. Is there anything else that you would like to present right now?
I just think it's an opportunity to engage our community in a celebration.
With so much that's happened in the school systems here and all over, to be able to really celebrate that a system has worked well for our children and with Abilities First as part of that system in a way, outside, but still, that we have really made some accomplishments and to be able to, with the school board, and we have sent a similar letter to the school board requesting the same thing. Let's just celebrate that this is 150 years of our school system. And it's turned out a lot of kids, some better and some worse, but it's turned out a lot of us. And we just like to celebrate it. So. And I might add, I wasn't here for Abilities First, but I have a twelve-year-old granddaughter who is a special needs. She's in South Florida in a rural community. She's had to, our daughter has had to fight for every moment, for every therapy, even though the school system there is amazing and is wonderful. But if the occupational therapist can't get there for two weeks, she doesn't get it. Same with the speech therapist, same with whatever therapist. So Abilities First, it makes me sad that we don't have something like that for her where I am. Unfortunately, she's also not in a position to be able to move back home. And if she would, I think she'd be right at home here. So please, anything you can do for these students and these children. It's so necessary, and it's so important, and so few communities truly have it. Thank you.
Thank you both very much. And that concludes our public comment for the evening. The next agenda item is council comments. We will begin to my left with Councilmember Lolly, followed by Councilmember Carter, and then to my right with Councilmember West, and then followed by Councilmember Horn. I will speak last. Mr. Lolly?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to start off by addressing some statements that were made tonight because they, they kind of ruffled some feathers, but I'm going to address them. I don't think anybody cares more about the south end of Middletown or any part of Middletown than this council up here and the council that preceded us. We have done many, many things to help and improve the quality of life of not only the south end, but everybody in this town. And we will continue to do so, and I'm sure the council that comes after us will also. So if you're going to come up and accuse this council, me in particularly, and especially the, the statements of impropriety that we, we did some bad things with the funds that were used for the, the demolition, you better have facts. But I want to assure the south end that nobody cares more for them and want to improve their quality of life than this council up here. And I just want to say that because if you're going to come up and stand and, and I, I, I get you have freedom of speech and you can say that, but I'm going to say, there's too many things that we've done in the last several years for all of Middletown and especially the south end, the Sunny Hill Community Center, Douglas Park, the new schools. You know, we, there, I, I get your issues and your concerns with the paperboard. We're making things better there. The demolition is still going on. But everything has passed the EPA testing and standards that there had to be. Anything that was bad was hauled off. What's left there has passed those tests. Eventually, that pile will be gone, but it's not something that can help happen immediately. To move it to another part of town will simply, or anywhere else, will simply just move that to other people's area, and then they'll have problems with that. Eventually, it will go away. But we knew from 2021, 2022, when we got the funding for this project and started this project, that it was going to take several years to accomplish, and we are doing so with the health and wellness of our citizens in mind. With that said, I got the opportunity yesterday, as did the mayor, to go and see the new premier hospital care flight helicopter in the world of the fire service. We call it the Bird. I could let Brian do his, or Chief, Chief Wright do his imitation of calling for the bird when we were on scenes, but it, he might laugh too hard. And it is phenomenal. You know, I think we made a great investment there. And I, I, it's, it's a program that will save many, many lives, and it increases, this helicopter will increase their ability to respond to emergencies out in the field and then also make transports from hospital to hospital for critical patients. So that was a neat thing to see yesterday. Our, our investment there is, is one that was done very well, and I think is going to be well-spent money over the next five years. The last thing is, I welcome the Abilities First here tonight. I'll have some things to say when they give their presentation. I don't want to steal their thunder, but I welcome them tonight, and Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Lolly. Mrs. Carter?
Good evening, community. I want to shout out to our park maintenance people. I spent some time this past two weeks in the parks and went into the bathrooms, and they smelled like lemon. And they had toilet paper in the bathrooms. The floors were clean. And, and I was just really proud to be in the parks, especially Douglas Park. Out at the Sunset, Sunset Park, I went out there. They had a back-to-school bash, and it was put on by some young businessmen here in Middletown called Exit 32. I had no idea... I had no idea what Exit 32 meant because I've never been into the exit numbers. But this group is called Exit 32 and it consists of businessmen that we have here in Middletown. There is a barber shop called The Fade Zone and that's owned by Maurice O'Doll. And there's Dorian Wood and Aaron Mayes. They both work in the barber shop. And the group of men that are involved with the Exit 32, Vershaun Jackson, Jackson Smith, and Kishan Beatty. And there's a group called Coaches Corner, which is ran by Jamil Calhoun. And he's a cook, excellent cook. And Chantel Roberts, another level of kiki's catering. And I was just really proud of them. Went back on the ninth, no, this was on the ninth. The eighth, the NAACP and the New Era Baptist Church and Middletown Connect and the Elks Lodge put on another bash down at Douglas Park. Now, they had haircuts and they were giving away backpacks. So I was really proud of these young men and I said, I'm going to give them a shout out. And I don't want to forget the Nazarene Church. Pastor Adam Prophet is wonderful. This is a wonderful human being. So shout out to all of them. And I called them the community caretakers. They did an excellent job all three weekends that I attended. I have one thing I wanted to say about the pile that is there. And I realize, and I hope everyone should realize, that everything takes time. I've even suggested that they get some of that stuff, whatever you call it, and put them in holes that we got in our streets and in our alleys. Just, and then they told me, you can't just do that. But, you know, it's just a thought. You can fill up a lot of holes and a lot of... Because if you're ever over there on Circle Jenny, you'll tear your car up trying to ride through there. Maybe they want to buy some of that stuff that we got. Also, I'm wondering if there is a timeline that they will remove it if we have set up a time. And that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Carter. Mr. West?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Back to school, so I'd like to wish all the teachers and parents, well, parents probably be happy that most of the kids are going back to school, but and the children, a productive, safe, healthy 2025-6 school year. In regards to the concerns on gravel roads, I'll get with Mr. Laurel this week and kind of discuss with him. I do remember seeing an email come through. And typically, at least my protocol, if there's a lot of city staff on there, I'll let them do their role first. And I know a lot of times people don't hit reply all if you have all of city council on there. We don't want to break any sunshine laws. But I'll get with Dan this week and talk to him. So appreciate you guys bringing that before us. So thank you. In regards to Abilities First, a couple of weeks ago, I'd like to thank Tal Moon invited all of us to come take a tour of the facility, went through, spent some time there with the new director. Phenomenal facility and good grief. I mean, hearing your child say, "I love you" for the first... How old was your son when he said that? Four, yeah. I mean, all right. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. West. Mr. Horn?
Good evening. It's always good, like I say, is to see a full group and everyone participating. That's what we want to see and hear. Because I prefer to see your pitch pace and power and know that you are passionate about when you come up here and speak for your four minutes. I do greatly appreciate it. Just want to start off with some, summertime still is here. We have Hops in the Hangar this weekend. I've had a lot of great events over the summer here in Middletown. And it really just shows that we continue to do this and we're going to continue to push forward. Next May, we're looking to have an airshow here on top of having the Ohio Challenge with the balloons and such. But, and I appreciate when our SBEs come in and make a concern. And the thing is with downtown, they're doing this Downtown Refresh. Our downtown area is nothing but SBEs. There's no franchises downtown. These are small business owners who are trying to just, at best, survive. And if they make profit or margin outstanding, they are here this time next year, even better. So I understand their concerns. Now, with that being said, we do have codes, we have ordinances and such. But my thought here is, is why should they take this serious when you have the Rose Furniture Building that has a letter from the city, from the building official dated January 12, 2023, with ordinances not saying exterior, which is, I think, Article 403, talking about paint and windows and such? It doesn't have a roof. I looked it up in the Ohio Building Code because I'm also in, I also have licenses. They have two pages about a roof, so it's kind of important. In the code that the code enforcement folks are supposed to use to inspect and then notify of violations, it says you have to have a roof to stop rain, rodents, and snow from coming in and also for stopping interior deterioration. On that letter, it says imminent danger. It says road closures. It says unsafe buildings. How can our SBEs who are trying just to survive take a letter that says you have 30 days to respond when you have a building that has been sitting for three years and nothing has been done? We need to support our downtown. Now, I'm not saying give them a pass. If there are violations, we need to work with them. But by all rights, they have 36 months, just like the, what was it called? Neglectful landlords and all the other neglectful landlords that have empty buildings in our downtown area that are just using them, as Mr. West says, for their inventory, for depreciation. How are we going to save the downtown area if we come at our folks and say, oh, by the way, we need these things fixed and you have 30 days to respond? Now, I understand right now we're living in 1985 because we don't have any emails and such like that. But when we get that back into that, I think we need to readdress that and look at that harder. And was this really the appropriate time to go after our downtown area when we have such a large city and we have so many other places where violations could be brought up? I'm not saying that you should get a pass. If you're in violation, that's fine, but you need to work with our SBEs. Because what's going to happen is, if it's a landlord and he or she has to do this repair, what's going to happen? They're going to raise the rent. If they own the building, they're going to make a decision of, I can't be here anymore. I'll go someplace else. And we have yet another empty building. So I would ask the city manager to look in. Number one, and that's the thing I want, I know this is new business, but I want to know what is going on with that building because it is peeling paint. The boards are warped. There's a window that's going to fall. And again, it is Ohio's largest skylight. It has no roof. So if our small business entities downtown have to take these concerns serious, all they do is walk by and say, well, it's been three years. I guess I got three years, just like this person does. And I think we need to really look at that, especially when we're trying to do what's called Downtown Refresh. We're trying to rebuild. We're trying to help our small business entities. That is the only way that's going to work is we work with them and be in partnership. As many have said up at that microphone, they want to work with the city. The city needs to work with them. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Horn. Tonight, I wanted to go ahead and also welcome the... Because School of Middletown has begun with a staggered start this week, the first full day being Friday, August 22nd. And I do wish a warm, very warm welcome back to our students, teachers, staff, coaches, school resource officers, principals, after-school program leaders, and all those it takes to keep our schools going and our children engaged and learning. Thank you to all and here's to a very good year. And then some updates about what's going on in the city. Are you a teenager? Or do you have teens in your life who love art or want to get started in art? Join the fun welcoming space for teen creatives to connect, create, and explore at the MAC, our Middletown Arts Center, every other Thursday. Come try out drawing, painting, sculpture, digital art, and more. All supplies are provided and the event is totally free. The upcoming teen art group is this Thursday, August 21st, at the MAC located at 130 North Verity Parkway. So they can be sure to have enough supplies. If you plan on attending, please RSVP 25134242417. Hops in the Hangar, the epic craft beer and aircraft event in southwest Ohio is this Saturday, August 23rd, from 4:00 PM to 9:00 PM at our Middletown Regional Airport located at 1701 Runway. Tickets are still available, but going fast. For more information and to purchase tickets, please visit hopsinthehanger.com. Please save the date for the upcoming Second Annual Mrs. Roper Romp in Middletown on Friday, September 5th at 6:00 PM in downtown. There will be drink specials for themed dressed patrons. If you have ever seen the sitcom Three's Company, which ran from 1976 to 1984, you will remember the vibrant caftan-wearing, chunky jewelry-loving lady. Be prepared to see Mrs. Roper everywhere in downtown Middletown that day. For more information, please visit downtownmiddletown.org. The city survey for the Downtown Refresh in our historical buildings is live for another couple of weeks until about the end of August. To take this important survey, please visit the city's website at cityofmiddletown.org and click the survey alert with the red button at the top of the screen. Click on Take the Manchester and Sunshine Survey and then click on the link below. And finally, click where it says click here. This will take you to the actual survey. There are only three questions. Do you support preserving the Manchester and Sunshine Buildings? Yes or no? Do you support demolishing the Manchester and Sunshine Buildings? Yes or no? And then, what would you like to see developed on the site if the buildings are demolished or repurposed? That's it. Please always complete and encourage your neighbors to complete any survey the city prepares. It is vital for city staff and city council to know what our residents and businesses have to say. As a reminder, the city of Middletown accepts applications for our boards and commissions throughout the year. So if there is something that you have an interest in and you wish to give back to your city in this way, please do submit an application. To learn more, please visit the city's website at cityofmiddletown.org. Lastly, and as always, there are many ways to get involved with your community and give back. Join a board or committee. Run for office. Apply for a job with the city. Volunteer at the hospital. Pick up trash in your neighborhood or park. Plant a garden in your yard. Smile at a neighbor. Find joint satisfaction for a job well done in whatever work you do or just have a positive and giving attitude. Find something that you can do regularly and give back. We are all connected and we are all in this together. The care of our city is an adventure in which we all get to share. And that is all for me tonight. And this concludes our council comments. Next on the agenda this evening is our city manager reports. City Manager Ms. Ashley Combs, you have the floor.
Good evening. So there are a couple of presentations for you this evening. The second one, there'll be a change. So the Middletown Event Center and City Events Update will actually be the Downtown Refresh RFQ and Jacob Schulte will be reviewing that for you. But first, we will have the Abilities First presentation.
Mayor, council members, and citizens, I just want to say thank you for this opportunity to come and share about something that's very close to my heart. I'm here on behalf of Abilities First, where we have been making potential possible for over 67 years right here in Middletown. Several of you got the opportunity to come over and see what we do and how we do it. But for those who didn't get an opportunity yet, I'd love to just share a few highlights. My name is David Hood and I'm the Executive Director at Abilities First. I've been there since 2022. You met some of our amazing families earlier that is just a small piece of the joy that I get to see every day. But I want to take a moment and introduce you to some of our board members. We've got a sign up there and on the outline that you've been given, it's on page two. We've got several of our board members here in the room. You've already met Jim Kleinger. We've got Joe Mulligan over there. Joe, wait. Tal is Tal Moon, who you know. Stephanie Bisselberg is our board chair. We've got several other board members who are a part of Abilities First. And I am here to say how proud I am to work alongside this exceptional and invested board who are completely bought in to our mission. Now, speaking of our mission, here's what it is. Our mission at Abilities First is to empower children and their families who are living with autism and different abilities to celebrate their strengths and to reach their unique and highest potential by providing comprehensive care and support in an inclusive learning environment. Now, on page four of your handout, this is how we do that. We have four key collaborative programs that work together to do this. Well done, Vanna. The first program is our Early Childhood Learning Center. It is an inclusive childcare center for children of all abilities for children ages six weeks through 10 years old. We have space for about 97 children in our Early Childhood Learning Center and only 14 more spots available. So if you know anybody... We are a gold-rated Step Up to Quality Center, which is the highest rating you can get through Step Up to Quality. And we also have an inclusive designation through the state of Ohio, which means although we're not a special needs childcare center per se, we know more about special needs than most. We're open from 6:30 AM to 6:00 PM, making us accessible to working families. And 80% of the families we serve come right from Middletown. Our second program is called our Autism Learning Center. We are an ODE-approved school for children ages three through nine or 10 who have been diagnosed with autism, who have an IEP or an Individualized Education Plan from their local school district. The focus here is to prepare students for their educational journey beyond Abilities First. We offer full and half-day school in low student-teacher ratios. And when I say low student-teacher ratios, here's what I mean. For our school-aged students, our student-teacher ratio is one to four, one teacher to every four students. For our preschoolers, it's one to three. And for those on the higher end of the spectrum, who may need a little extra support, our moderate to intensive class offers a student-teacher ratio of one to two to get the individualized support they need. All families in the Autism Learning Center qualify for the Ohio Autism Scholarship, which helps pay for their tuition. But there's something we do a little differently. Unlike other schools like us, we don't charge tuition on top of what families receive for their scholarship. So the families who come to our Autism Learning Center can come at $0.00 out of their own pockets. We did a survey recently and 80% of the families we serve qualify as low-income. And so we believe it's the right thing for us to do. One of our other differentiators is that we do not have an age requirement on potty training. If you live in the world of child development and child education, you know what a big barrier that can be. And so we have chosen to not allow that to become a barrier for our families. Our third program is our Pediatric Therapies Program, where we have a team of professional licensed occupational, speech, and physical therapists who work every day with our kids to achieve the goals that they've set for themselves and their families have set, who work on their IEP goals at the same time and whose total goal is to help unlock their hidden potential for every child, help them to access the gifts that we know they already have. Finally, our fourth program is kind of a new program. It's something we invented out of a need we saw. It's called our Success Program. And the Success Program is simply a team of staff who've been trained to provide wraparound services for families in order to be able to get the support and resources they need. The success team coordinates with several other community agencies to bring in additional support so that our kiddos who need them have that support accessible to them. Whenever we find a gap in services, whenever we hear a parent saying, "I need help", our success team is there to help. Whether that means getting referrals to other agencies, maybe it's sitting down, helping families fill out complicated paperwork to access resources, or sometimes it's just sitting on the phone for an hour or waiting for a human to answer so that they can get a question answered. This is what our success team does. So let me tell you how we put all of these together. Imagine for a moment you are the parent of a child with autism and you have to go to work. What do you do? Well, you come to Abilities First and you drop your child off early in the morning at the Early Childhood Learning Center because you know our childcare center is better equipped than most and better educated than most to be able to support your child's special needs. At 9:00 that morning, that teacher will bring them to the... At 9:00 that morning, that teacher will bring them to their Autism Learning Center classroom, where they will have school all day in an environment designed specifically for them in a low student teacher ratio, and while they're in school, our pediatric therapists will come in and work individually with those children on their goals, and the whole time working in the background, our Success Team is working to make sure you have the support and resources you need to be able to better support your child. And at the end of the day, you're going to come by Abilities First and pick your child up from the Early Childhood Learning Center, and in one day, they've received childcare, education, therapy, and support, and you didn't have to leave work, and they didn't have to leave the building. This is what makes us special. Let me talk just a minute about our impact. On page five, you'll see some of those metrics. In 2024, we serve 423 children and families. 281 of them were from Middletown. We serve six counties and 21 different school districts, making us a destination. People drive in from other communities to receive services in Middletown. They don't have to drive out of Middletown to look for those. 94% of the children we serve have an identified disability. 79% of our families are considered low-income, and 35% of our families identify as racially diverse backgrounds. We employ 58 people at Abilities First right here in Middletown. Now, on page six, I want to point you to some of the investments that we've made strategically over the last several years. As we developed our strategic plan, we knew growth was key to long-term success. Over the last three years, we've opened five brand-new classrooms, allowing us to serve additional 40 children in our programs. We've streamlined our intake process so that we've been able to cut the time from first contact to enrollment in half, and we've been able to triple the number of contacts that have become enrollments. But our most important investment has been our investment in our staff. We are a people-to-people organization, and our children deserve the best. And so we have worked on investing in those staff through fair and livable wages, through generous benefits packages, through retirement programs, training and education, so that we at Abilities First can become an employer of choice. Our focus on best-in-class culture has been a real important piece to us, and we just found out two weeks ago that for the second year in a row, we've been named a great workplace in the community, so we're very proud of that as well. Since 2022, our Autism Learning Center has grown by 164%. Now, before you think to yourself, wow, that's amazing, and it is, I want to call your attention that nationally, instances of childhood autism have grown by 175%. So all Abilities First is doing is trying to keep up with the need in the community. But while we've grown, we've lowered our student-staff ratio from one to six to one to four because we believe maintaining our focus on excellence for our kiddos is just as important, if not more important, than growth. One of our key critical components is our summer program. You'll see some pictures of that on page seven. It is critical to our service model. Our Autism Learning Center runs on a school year, and so what do our kids do during the summer? You heard a little about that earlier. Our summer program offers an opportunity to provide a continuation of services for our children in a fun and educational environment. Many of our kiddos don't get to go to mainstream camps, and we think they deserve that opportunity. You all know that our kids coming back from summer break, they're in this summer slump moment where they've forgotten a third of everything they learned last year. That's even more challenging for the kiddos we serve, and so this continuity of care for year-round is so critical to what we do. The Ohio Autism Scholarship only covers about seven to eight months of our expenses in our Autism Learning Center. So in order to provide this important continuity of care, we have to raise several hundred thousand dollars just to break even. This summer, our board has gone to work at raising $250,000 before August 30th. And I know what you're thinking, that sounds insane. It might be, but I'm excited to share that we have already raised $180,000, leaving a gap of just $70,000 left to raise. We've done this through raising this money through grants, through scholarships, and mostly through private donations from folks who believe in our mission. And I will say, more than two-thirds of that funding have come directly out of the pockets of our invested board, if you're wondering how truly invested they really are. The return on all these investments that we've made is coming later this fall and ongoing, but today, we have a short-term gap, and this is why we're coming to you. On page eight, you'll see our request that, in addition to wanting to everybody in the city to know exactly what we do, who we are, and how we do it, and I do thank you for the opportunity to kind of brag on us just a little bit. We're also coming to you because we're looking for some one-time funding support. At Abilities First, we've made some significant adjustments to make sure that we have a sustainable model moving forward. We've worked really hard to make sure we meet the enrollment goals that will allow us to stay sustainable. As a matter of fact, as of today, 72 of the 75 spots available in our Autism Learning Center are full, so three more kids. We've also done the difficult work of cost-cutting. We've done the work on our end to the tune of approximately $380,000 annually. We've done that through paying off debt, through streamlining our administration and reorganizing our focus in therapies on our Autism Learning Center so that we have less overhead, more programs. But we need your help. This summer, we need your help to cover this gap and to make sure that we don't have to cut any of our critical services. And so I'd just like to take this opportunity to invite you to partner with Abilities First in making potential possible right here in Middletown, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Hood. That was a wonderful presentation. Would any council members like to speak to this at this point or ask any questions or comments?
I don't have any questions, but I just want to say that I fully support everything this great organization is doing and the great work for the people who have the needs. You know, it kind of puts things into perspective, what's really important in life and how we can help children with the educational services and their ability needs. And so, you know, I think this is something that we should fully support. That's my opinion. I don't know how...
I agree.
If everybody's in agreement, we can do this, make a motion to close the gap of $72,751 this evening, make a motion, and go from there.
Mayor.
Go ahead, Mrs. Carter. You can turn on your mic. Yeah, go ahead and turn on your mic.
Even it out to 73,000.
Mr. Horn?
I just make a motion that we fill the gap for them.
Okay, so there's been a motion to fill the gap for Abilities First, and are we looking at 73,000 or just what they have printed here?
I was gonna say 73.
73, we're looking at 73 even, so there's been a motion.
Make it easy for Sam.
I'm sorry? Make it easy for Sam, our finance director, yes. So the motion is to fill the gap for Abilities First for $73,000. Is there a second?
Second. I don't know who you made miss, but I'll second her, whatever.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
No, I just want to thank Mr. Klinegers, so if we ever have PowerPoint down again, first and third.
Yeah. Vanna Klinegers.
Thank you. Yes, I also just wanted to say thank you so much, everybody who came out tonight to speak on behalf of Abilities First. This is such, like I said, such a gem, not only for our community, but really in this country and the world. This is really a gold standard of what education could be for every student, and I can only imagine what a help this is for families, excuse me, getting emotional, but who have that weight of the world on their shoulders, and this lifts that weight, some of that weight. Excuse me. So I will go ahead and yield any other further discussion before we vote. All right. Mrs. Skank, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slanka?
Yes.
Mr. Lally?
Yes.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Yes, as having the motion passes. Thank you.
Mayor, may I say thank you?
Of course.
I'm a little blown away by your generosity, and I just want to say thank you. And what I also want to say is, we are so appreciative of this one-time support. We are also looking forward to making sure we maintain a very healthy and robust relationship with the city of Middletown, with this council, and with all that's going on in Middletown. We want to be smack in the middle of it, so thank you for your support this time, and I look forward to continuing to work together.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you do. All right, thank you, Ms. Combs.
Next, we'll have Jacob Schulte with the Downtown Refresh RFQ.
Jacob, do you need Jim Klinegers to stay? He could stay.
Unfortunately, I did not have a static presentation for tonight. Just going off of some notes, but good evening, Mayor, members of council. Wanted to come in tonight, take a brief moment to kind of talk about the Downtown Refresh project, the upcoming RFQ, and kind of where we've been at. As some of you may be aware, we've been working through a series of working sessions with community stakeholders to kind of help identify a little bit more of the details within this RFQ. Last Monday, we had actually sat down in these council chambers and reviewed a little bit more of the details on the format. In that meeting, two really important things stuck out to us. One, we were pretty desperately lacking some additional context to some of our downtown assets, whether that be the Sorgh Opera House, some of our historic districts, a lot of the things that make downtown Middletown unique. And that was something that was identified that, you know, even if it's in a subsection, but something to help identify and to help put in this RFQ for, maybe it's national or out-of-the-area developers, to kind of give them a snapshot of our community before they kind of come in in more details. Something else that was revealed, especially from a development front, was some of the key metrics that are in the downtown. A lot of developers like to see things like foot traffic, vehicular traffic counts for like Central Avenue, State Route 122, population data, socioeconomic, something that kind of helps build the case as to some of the market trends and some of the different development appetites and metrics that they would kind of look to when they would build a pro forma for a development like this. From that, we kind of, walking from there, we'd had another small group discussion last Thursday in Conference Room 2C that a smaller stakeholder group kind of got a little bit more into the weeds on the overall purpose of this RFQ. We had several working session meetings where we kind of went over some of the grammatical errors, some of the things that, you know, some formatting issues that we as staff definitely need to be making sure we fix and make whole before we put this out to release. But overall, kind of getting with the stakeholders to kind of better understand this RFQ process, how it relates to what the BCFA and Joshua Smith is doing to our downtown, and make sure that's kind of holistic message. From Thursday's meeting, you know, really emphasizing the primary purpose of this RFQ is to solicit additional development interests. We as staff have development partners and contacts that we can reach out to for something like this. Joshua Smith and his efforts with the BCFA have development partners, but there are still additional development interests out there that maybe we are not aware of at this point, and really, that's where this RFQ with kind of a holistic marketing campaign to say, here's our downtown, here's these highlighted properties that we want to see redeveloped, and try to get kind of into the unforeseen developers that may have an interest from there, to kind of come into town, come take a look at our properties, and see what they may be able to do. Then we further kind of discussed kind of how the BCFA's relationship with this RFQ works, and again, it gets back to that exposure. Any additional development interest we can to come look at these properties, see what the real market can do for these properties, just further reinforces what sort of proposals we may receive. Getting back to some of the other RFQs we've done in the downtown, or even the Town Mall, for example, some of the strongest RFQ responses we get are the ones that we have continuous relationships with through this process to kind of help, you know, give them as much information as they can to make strong proposals. So kind of what does this RFQ look like? Very similar to what we've done in the past with the Town Mall or even a previous downtown RFQ. We go over development expectations with the properties. We identify kind of some of the key metrics, again, foot traffic, vehicular traffic, economic data for this area, to kind of help build a picture on the forefront for the developers. Then we go into the highlighted properties. Again, this RFQ is really, it almost like a funnel effect. We're looking at the downtown as a whole and to say, you know, what sort of, where could be the best point for a really catalytic development, or even a smaller development, but then really focusing in on those highlighted properties of the Manchester Inn, the Sunshine or Snyder Ford Building, the First National Building, and then the vacant lots being the Swallowlands and the North Broad Street Lots. Then we go into some additional background information, some of those really key downtown assets, things that a developer should really be understanding, hey, these are some really great arts and entertainment, historic features, incentive information, something on the forefront that they can say, okay, we have these details, we kind of have a little, dip their toe in the water, so to speak, on understanding our downtown. And then we get into more of the development expectations, and what do we want to see on these RFQs? Ultimately, the idea is to see what the high-level concepts could be for these properties, what their experience could be, and then whether it's kind of all of those highlighted properties, some of those development properties, you know, we're really keeping it open-ended to say, you know, if we have a quality developer, you know, what could be their strong suit? We don't want to say you have to take on all of these city-owned properties in our downtown. That may be too aggressive for a really quality development to occur. But ultimately, you know, through all of these working sessions, one of the things that were identified, this community has a really strong passion for these properties, but more so, they have a strong passion to see a quality development in our downtown. Our downtown has really needed a very catalytic development and something that, as we move forward with trying to reinvest in our downtown community, something that brings a really quality atmosphere to our community. A lot of times, downtowns are kind of the keynotes as the anchor, or sort of your hub of your urban core, so just making sure whatever comes out of these RFQs is a development of quality and something that we can really be proud of at the end of the day. So that's kind of the high level, where we've been at with our downtown and the RFQ, how all that's relating to what the solicitation efforts we're doing with the BCFA and developers as of right now, but I'm more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Schulte. Any questions or comments from council? Mr. Horn?
So in the RFQ, is it the First Financial, the seven-story building, is that also in the RFQ?
Yes, that'll be the First National Bank Building.
The First National Bank Building, okay. Main thing is, is because we received an engineer's report, and with these buildings, and it'd be great if you had a developer A say, okay, I'm going to take on this, developer B is going to take on this, but time is somewhat of an essence, that we continue to kick the can down the road on this, and I'm not saying we got to have something decided by the middle of September or something, but I appreciate all the hard work that City Manager Combs and her team has done with this. But these buildings, they have to be, right now, in my opinion, and what I've read, is they are continually deteriorating, not unsafely, just deteriorating, so that has to stop and they have to be maintained. So whoever is going to, hopefully, the language in the RFQ is, that's fine, you're going to take this property on, but a roof has to be put on that building because of the concerns of our building officials saying that parapet wall is going to fail. The Manchester Inn, reading the engineer's reports, the roofs, about an acre of roofs, has to be addressed immediately because when we sold the property back in 2014 to a private developer who was going to turn it into a brewery, and the budget was like $40 million, I believe I read, at that time, 11 years ago, the requirement was they had to put a roof on. Two years went by, they could not find the financing, so 11 years ago, the Manchester needed a roof. So I appreciate all this work that's been put in this and that you've had these meetings with local folks, but I'm hoping that we get some serious developers who, one, know the challenge that they have with older buildings that we have chosen to buy and maintain, and that it's going to be difficult at best to take care of some of these buildings. But I do appreciate all the hard work that you guys have put into this, but at some point, these buildings are going to have to be somewhat maintained to a point where they can actually go. And the reason I say that is because the conversations I've had where they have gone to renovation, restoration, it took five years for a historical grant of $25 million. I don't... I don't want to see the Manchester go another five years for a $30 million, because I think their estimate was a little light, in my opinion. So these things are going to have to be sustained to the point where they can go over a period of time, and that's going to be on our dime, or it's going to have to be negotiated in the RFQ. So that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Horn. Are there any other comments or questions at this time?
Jacob, just a couple of things. Thank you for the update. Mr. Sean Line had sent a few of us an email last week talking about some of the updates to the RFQ. Is there another meeting scheduled at this point?
At this point, there is not. We had had a follow-up meeting last Thursday to kind, again, go into the overall purpose. You know, the working sessions where we were really going into the formatting were great, but ultimately, what we wanted to do with this community feedback was address the general purpose, you know, from a high level, making sure that what we are trying to achieve here with this RFQ meets the needs and the demands of what our community is looking for. And I feel like after Thursday, after these other meetings, we've got a pretty good understanding of that, and ultimately, what our attempt here is today is to take everything we've worked through with this RFQ, take some additional formatting considerations, some additional feedback on the key metrics, additional community highlights, and get that out the door for development interests, probably not end of this week, hopefully early next week, and you know, really try to start soliciting some development interest for our downtown.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other comments? I have a few questions. The survey, will that kind of also be looked at for RFQ input, or how's that going to work out?
My interpretation of the survey responses is more related to kind of the council discussions on October 7th. You know, we've had a lot of really great community feedback from additional, again, you know, the outreach sessions, the Downtown Refresh working sessions, but yeah, I think that's really more for council's deliberations. And we should, I guess I did miss a part here on the RFQ timeline, after this release, probably sometime next week, there will be a 30-day window for them to respond to this RFQ, and then having those results back for you all's deliberation on that October 7th timeline.
And...
Excuse me, Jacob. Mayor, that's why I suggested the survey, to give us more input, because I know you like that a lot. So that, it really has nothing to do with him, it was more for us to see where the percentages were.
Thank you, Mr. Horn. Yes, and I wanted to say, two more things. I wanted to say just what an excellent job that you and your team, Ms. Combs, the entire community economic development team has done with this work and the communication with the residents. It has even been stated from somebody outside of our community, like, wow, this is like a model. They wish other communities would do what we are doing. So I really just want to commend all of you for the great work that you are doing. It's very impressive. And then the last question I have is, you had mentioned that we, it really is helpful for people, residents, just regular folk as well, just to go out and say, hey, there's a development that I really like, I think it might be nice for downtown Middletown, maybe find out who that developer is, and ask them, start that relationship, hey, would you apply to our RFQ? What's the best way for somebody to do that? If they find a developer that they're talking to, grab their number, what's the next step for them to get them in touch with RFQ?
Absolutely. Part of this RFQ, I guess, this submission process, we'll have this RFQ post-hunter bid opportunities, and the city will be doing some local marketing there to kind of help make sure the community is aware this is out. And something we did emphasize with our Downtown Refresh working groups, any sort of development interest, whether it's locally, in the state, region, nationally, if you see a really strong urban revitalization effort, you know, try to help us work to make some connections there, to solicit them for this RFQ, to say, hey, if this is in your marketing pipeline or project development pipeline, we have a great opportunity here. And again, that can be, you know, from something as local as Butler County Mixed-Use Developments to as far out Ohio, or, you know, regionally, nationally. You know, any development interest that we have that want to come, like, take a look at our downtown, this is the time that we're really trying to push that, to try to help market some of these properties. But again, across our downtown spectrum of buildings, there's even privately-owned properties that maybe a developer is not ready to take on the Manchester Inn, but they may have a really strong interest. This RFQ is a marketing document that can help get their interest in here, come into our downtown and take a look at these properties.
Yeah, I took away that you said that it's really those personal relationships, kind of like when you have, maybe you're going for a job, and if you know somebody, that always helps, so it's really important. So it sounds like if people see a development that they like, they can just go to our website under bid opportunities, that's where people can submit to the RFQ, is that correct?
Yes.
All right. That's for the developers.
That would be the strongest way, you know, reach out to our staff if you've identified a project that you'd like to, you say, hey, here's a project, I don't know, Canton, Ohio, Columbus, Ohio, you know, at this intersection, here's a developer, and we can work to make those contacts. Or, you know, we even encourage citizens, reach out to the companies themselves, say, hey, you know, the more people pushing these companies to take a look at our community, the more impactful this is going to be.
Is there a best, well, I'm going to say email at this point, or phone number, is there a best email or phone number for people to send those to staff?
It would probably be the CED email, and that's something I can follow up there with council once this goes live, and through our marketing material.
All right, to get that out to people. Thank you so much. Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much, Mr. Schulte.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Combs.
Thank you, that's all for me.
That's all. All right, at this time, I'd like to take a 10-minute break. We will come back at 7:15.
It crashed.
We will start in about 10 seconds. If you could take your seats.
They had a hard landing. Yeah, it ruined, and then the other one got replaced by age, so they're doing two of them.
We are ready to begin. If you can take your seats, please. All right, we are ready to begin back in session. The next item on our agenda this evening is the consent agenda. While the consent agenda is generally for consensus items, do any council members wish to remove anything from the consent agenda this evening and move it to the motion agenda? Seeing none, we will continue. Mrs. Skank, please present the consent agenda.
...your consideration this evening, we have to receive and file the Board of Health minutes from July 8th, 2025, to confirm the conditional appointments of Mark Kennedy to the position of Garage Superintendent in the Department of Public Works and Utilities, Division of Municipal Garage, and Jacob Schulte to a position of Assistant Community and Economic Development Director in the Community and Economic Development Department, and to receive and file oaths of office for Ian Bruce and Jenna Horstman.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded to accept the consent agenda. We will proceed to vote. Mrs. Skank, please call the roll.
Mayor Slankka?
Yes.
Mr. Lolly?
Yes.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes, and congratulations, Jacob.
The yeses have it, and the motion passes, the consent agenda is approved. Thank you, Mr. Horn, that was nice. Our next item on the agenda is our motion agenda. We have one item on the motion agenda this evening. Mrs. Skank, please present item A on the motion agenda.
To request an extension of our contract for the purchase of Highway Rock Salt from Cargill Incorporated, salt, road safety of North Olmsted, Ohio, in the amount of $79.34 per ton, for the approximate usage of 3,500 tons over the 2025-2026 winter season. At a price of $79.34, this would equate to an expenditure of approximately $277,690.
Thank you. Ms. Combs, the staff report, please.
This bid supports the city's snow and ice control. The previous season's price was $69.34 a ton. Salt prices vary with winter severity and past usage. The current price for 2025 to '26 is based on the existing contract and part of the cooperative bid. Bidding independently would forfeit the benefits for better pricing and the access provided by the cooperative. The estimated cost is allocated within the street maintenance budget.
Thank you, Ms. Combs. Is there a motion to approve item A, a request of an extension of our contract for the purchase of Highway Rock Salt from Cargill Incorporated?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. Mrs. Skank, please call the roll.
Mr. Lolly?
Yes.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slankka?
Yes. The yeses have it, and the motion passes. This concludes the motion agenda. The next item on the agenda this evening is legislation. We have six items of legislation this evening. Law Director Mr. Alex Ewing, legislation, please.
Item number one, resolution number R-2025-25, a resolution to make adjustments to appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Middletown, counties of Butler and Maureen, state of Ohio, for the period ending December 31st, 2025. Health fund-funds for OWDA reimbursable grants, second reading.
Thank you. Ms. Combs, do you have anything to add?
Yes, so the Department of Health received a $150,000 grant from the Ohio Water Development Authority for the 2025 Household Sewage Treatment Systems Repair/Replacement Program. Since this was not included in the 2025 budget, a supplemental appropriation is needed to begin utilizing the funds. The project is expected to be completed by December 31st, 2026.
All right, thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. It has been properly moved and seconded, is there any discussion? All right, hearing none, we will proceed to vote. Mrs. Skank, please call the roll.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slankka?
Yes.
Mr. Lolly?
Yes.
The yeses have it, and the motion passes. The legislation passes, forgive me. Mr. Ewing, the next item, please.
Item number two, resolution number R-2025-25, a resolution to make adjustments to appropriations Item number two, resolution number R-2025-26, a resolution to make adjustments to appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Middletown, Counties of Butler and Warren, State of Ohio, for the period ending December 31st, 2025, and declaring an emergency Fire Station Levy Fund.
Thank you. Ms. Combs, a staff report, please.
This is requesting a supplemental appropriation of $200,000 from the Fire Station Levy Fund, as follows: other professional services, traffic control supplies, and other equipment. These costs originally covered by other funds are for developing new fire stations. Reallocation includes the general fund for miscellaneous purchases and auto and gas tax fund for traffic signal upgrades. There's additional needs that include landscaping for the two fire stations, SCBA water, or I'm sorry, bottle washer, and miscellaneous expenses contingency. This allocation provides flexible for unforeseen, flexibility for unforeseen costs. These funds will be utilized again by the Fire Station Levy. An emergency passage is requested for funding availability as landscaping will begin shortly.
Thank you, Ms. Combs. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Right, here, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mrs. Carter.
So what are we doing? I heard you say we were going to clean up the property or fix up something?
So Chief Wright, do you want to come up and explain? Thank you.
So with the new fire stations, you're aware there was no soft cost built in. So we had to spend out of our current operating year this year. So some of our line items, such as professional services, major equipment and stuff, we've spent to keep the project moving in lieu of coming to you every week for $200 to generate out of the Fire Station Levy Fund. So this will come out of the Fire Station Levy Fund and put back in there so we can finish the project for tables, and the landscaping just needs to be completed, things like that.
Okay. Any other questions for Fire Chief Alizap here? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from council? All right, hearing none, we will proceed to vote. Mrs. Skank, please call the roll.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slankah?
Yes.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Lally?
Yes.
The yeses have it and the legislation passes. Mr. Ewing, the next item, please.
Item number three, resolution number R-2025-27, a resolution to make adjustments to appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Middletown, Counties of Butler and Warren, State of Ohio, for the period ending December 31st, 2025, and declaring an emergency Property Development Fund Police Substation.
Thank you. Ms. Combs, a staff report, please.
This report requests a supplemental appropriation for the Middletown Division of Police to renovate the old Fire Station 82 into a police substation as approved by the City Council. The old Fire Station 82, located at 3765 Dixie Highway, has been vacated following the opening of the new fire station. The Police Division aims to repurpose this building and enhance services on the east end of the city. A supplemental appropriation of $130,026.69 is requested for necessary repairs, security measures, and equipment. The total also includes a contingency of $10,000. The alternate is to defer the funding to 2026 budget. This is emergency passage due to the need to enhance police services and improve the public safety again on the east end of the city.
Thank you, Ms. Combs. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
I think this is one more showing that we are serious about safety. This also gives Chief Nelson the ability to respond to the east side, also to be able to help our SROs at the Middletown School System Campus. And also, as he stated, he needs more space to store evidence, which is very important. So I like it when we can repurpose a building that we already own. So that's why this was brought up, and I think it's outstanding that this council has approved this, or will.
Thank you, Mr. Horn. Any other comments or questions?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
I think this is something that we could put on the back burner until next year. I don't see the emergency. We have many activities on the south end, and we don't get a response in a certain length of time. So I see this as something that we can postpone until next year. I don't see an emergency.
Is there any discussion about the suggestion to wait until fiscal year '26 to begin the work? Yes or no's? All right, any other comments? Unless you wanted to make a motion, they've already kind of discussed it. We'll go ahead and go forth. All right, we'll go ahead and go forth. Since we will go ahead and, Mrs. Skank, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Slankah?
Yes.
Mr. Lally?
Yes.
Mrs. Carter?
No.
Mr. West?
Yes.
The yeses have it and the legislation passes. Mr. Ewing, the next item, please.
Item number four, resolution number R-2025-28, a resolution authorizing the City of Middletown's participation in the National Opioid Settlement with eight additional defendants and declaring an emergency. No action requested until September 2nd, 2025.
Thank you. Ms. Combs, a staff report, please.
This is to approve the city's participation in the opioid settlement with eight defendants. Middletown is a part of the One Ohio Memorandum Regarding the Opioid Settlement Funds. The latest defendants proposing a settlement are, forgive my pronunciation, Avlogin, Amneal, Apatex, Hikma, Endeavor, Mylan, Sun, and Zytus. The city must opt-in to join the settlement. The specific amount the city will receive from the settlements is currently unknown. City Council could choose not to participate, making the city ineligible for the funding round. This is a second reading emergency with no action needed by September 2nd, 2025 to meet the October opt-in deadline.
Thank you, Ms. Combs. As she said, this is a second reading emergency, and there is no action to be taken at this time. However, is there any discussion from council?
Can you repeat those?
Now. Well. Okay, got you.
There's always one in the group.
Any other comments or questions? All right, well, thank you very much. And hearing none, we will go ahead and move on. The next legislative item, please, Mr. Ewing.
Item number five, ordinance number O-2025-50, an ordinance denying a request to change the zoning classification for 86.086 acres, known as parcel number Q651107200009, located on Miller Road from R1 Suburban Residential District to PD Plan Development District, and not approving a preliminary development plan for construction of approximately 217 single-family homes and a commercial out parcel. First reading.
Thank you, Mr. Ewing. Ms. Combs, a staff report, please.
I have nothing to add following the public hearing.
All right, well, thank you. As this is a first reading, there is no action to be taken at this time. However, is there any discussion from council? Hearing none, we will continue. Mr. Ewing, the last legislation item, please.
Item number six, resolution number R-2025-29, a resolution to make adjustments to appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Middletown, Counties of Butler and Warren, State of Ohio, for the period ending December 31st, 2025. Police Grant Fund Training, first reading.
Thank you. Ms. Combs, a staff report, please.
This is to request a supplemental appropriation of $24,274.40 for specialized training for the Middletown Division of Police's patrol mandatory training budget. The Middletown Division of Police has received a CPT reimbursement from the Ohio Attorney General's Office for the $24,274.40 now deposited into that mandatory training account. A supplemental appropriation is needed to use the funds for the training. No appropriating of these funds would be preventative of the required training. There's no impact on city funds as they've received these and they can cover the expenses. And again, this is a non-emergency item.
Thank you. As stated, this is a first reading, so there is no action to be taken at this time. However, is there any discussion from council? Hearing none, this concludes the legislation for the evening. The next item on the agenda is unfinished business. Do any council members have anything they would like to bring up under unfinished business?
I've got one thing.
Mr. Lally?
I guess this is the best place. I want to make a point of clarification on the Rose Furniture Building. Councilman Horn, I agree with you and agree and understand that we do need to make sure we are consistent and uniform in doing our code enforcement and building stuff. The Rose Furniture Building had some extenuating circumstances in it, and essentially, it's not because our current staff has not done what they're supposed to do or not do. The code enforcement people several years ago received a directive from me not to leave the Rose Furniture Building alone. And that was because the individual who owns the Rose Furniture Building also owns the Getz Tower. We were in negotiations with that individual as part of getting going with the Rose Getz Tower and some type of a quid pro quo. See, I can't even say that right. On how that Rose Furniture Building would fit in with the entire downtown and getting that, getting the Getz Tower done. Part of it was the city was going to acquire that property. We were going to raise that property with hopefully land bank funds and either make that a parking lot or some part of the downtown revitalization. So it wasn't anything that staff, past or present, has done not to uniformly enforce the rules in the code enforcement. There were extenuating circumstances that they were told, let's leave that alone. We're in negotiations with it right now. Now, because of financial difficulties, the loss of historical credits, the having to reapply for historical credit, there's just been a complete delay on the Getz Tower. I do know recently there's been some re-engagement with the owner of the Getz Tower and what's going to happen. And I'm sure our current staff will be on that to see what's going to happen. I do know Joshua Smith with the Butler County Finance Authority is aware of all that. And I do know something should happen on that. But I just wanted to make sure we didn't think the Rose Furniture situation was because our staff wasn't acting on it. It was because they received a directive from me not to when I was the city manager.
And I want to be clear. I'm not going after staff on this. It's just when you have a small business entity downtown and you receive this notice, and this justified. I mean, I looked everything. I have my own copy of the code book, of what they're supposed to use of. But to me, if I'm trying to run a business downtown and I get a notice of peeling paint, and my business happens to be close to the Rose Furniture, and I see peeling paint and warp boards and windows that look like they're about to fall out, and the letter is stapled right to the building, not knowing that information, I'm going to say, well, wait a minute. They're giving me 30 days, and this letter says, it says 2023. So that's why we do this, by having conversation, putting it in public record, so our SBS can listen to this and say, okay, I get it. And we need to show them a little rhythm, too, of, okay, what can we do to help them along with the Mr. Coon who owns the Getz Tower?
Thank you. Any other unfinished business from council this evening? The one item that I would bring up is just, could we please mail a copy of the contract that Mrs. Marva Gaston has requested to her? I know she's said that she has requested it. So I just want to make sure that she gets it for whatever reason it's not getting to her. Thank you so much. Okay, and with that, we will continue. Does any, that concludes unfinished business. The next item on the agenda is new business. Does any council member have any new business they'd like to discuss this evening?
I don't know if it's a new business or old business. And I was asking for a date of possibly a timeline for the pile of, whatever, calling it, the pile.
Yeah, we can get council a timeline of the project as a whole and everything that's going on. Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Project, was that?
The paperboard project, sorry.
They said it was still working on it, doing what?
Well, it has to go through its reclamation. I don't want to steal your thunder, but go ahead.
No, yeah, we're still in that process with, exactly. Sure, yeah, if you would like to come down.
All right, Mr. Jacob Schulte, thank you.
Yeah, so we are currently working with our environmental consultants, Burgess and Ipple, on the plans and specs there for kind of what the Phase Two, the grading and the final remediation of the impacted soils. Ultimately, we've been going back and forth to get the plans and the specs out for bid. We're hoping to get that out in the next couple of weeks. But what that's going to do is that's going to allow us to solicit the develop, or the contractors, to go in, to grade the site, to remove any final remediated or impacted soils, not the gravel pile itself, but the actual soils in the ground. Get all that wiped out, get the site graded, get it seeded, remove all the grub and the fencing and stuff. And then, you know, hopefully, ideally, all of that work will be done this fall, and then in the spring, just the final top coat seeding, to actually get the grass growing. Specific to the gravel pile, I know about 40% of it has been spoken to for the Wellfield project that activity should be coming underway in the next few weeks. So, but I, actual granular timelines and stuff, we can certainly get you a supplemental document after this to, you know, further talk through those points.
Because I'm thinking when the snow starts, if it's not leveled or removed, you're going to really have some issues.
Yeah, and, you know, I think.
What issues will the snow cause?
The children. You know, we have children going over there now, riding their bicycles, going up on the hill and coming down. So if there's some snow up there.
Sled ride over there, all right.
Gravel, they're riding their bikes on the gravel pile itself? Okay, yeah, I'll make sure, you know, Scott Tadish and I from Public Works can coordinate on checking the security of that.
Climbing, they're trying to climb up there, and they're falling and rolling down. They think it's a blast, yeah.
Yeah, that's something we'll follow up on.
Thank you. I'm just glad it's not the paperboard anymore, filled with meth heads. So can we just take a second and really remember not long ago it was an absolute disaster? So this is a process. Everybody relax.
It's going to take time. It's not something that can be accomplished in a year or two. That was a massive facility, and the fact that it's taken time to get it down is not abnormal. It's part of the process. And because it's taken a while is because staff is doing it right. They are doing it properly. They are doing it in a manner that is safe and healthy for people in the area.
So if you ride up Martin Luther King Drive over there on the left side of Coen Brothers, you see another mass mountain.
You talking about the paving company?
Oh, right there, as you go up, yeah. So, I mean.
It's a legitimate business that is operating properly.
Right, that's what I'm saying. I don't understand that the mass that we have on Verity is just as high as the one that they have over there. So we have mass mountains of product throughout that area. So that's all I'm just referring to. If you ride up Roosevelt, I mean, Martin Luther King Drive, you'll see more massive mountains of product.
I remember the mountains we had when we were building the schools. But it came to fruition that they're beautiful sights now.
That's good.
Any other further comments or any other new business from council at this time? All right, hearing none, that concludes our new business for the evening. And the next item on the agenda is executive session. Do I hear a motion to move to executive session under the authority of ORC 121.22G1 to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded to move to executive session. We will proceed to vote. Mrs. Skank, please call the roll.
Mayor Slankah?
Yes.
Mr. Lally?
Yes.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. West?
Yes.
Mr. Horn?
Yes.
The yeses have it. Council now move to executive session. Yeses have it. Council now move to executive session.[357.62]